Kind of thinking back here, would it be in the best interest to not worry about the bed capacity, but maybe worry about the population? What percentage of population? If we looked at how many infections we had versus our population and said, if we reach this certain percentage of population with infections, then we can come back and meet as a board. I think we're looking at bed capacity, or maybe we should be looking at individuals in our community.
We did discuss that, and that's possible. Again, I don't have a dog in the spice, but whatever anybody wants, everybody wants to go with, I'm okay with. But we did discuss doing population. The problem with that is it doesn't reflect our ability to handle infections. The capacity reflects us kind of raising to our limit to handle new hospitalizations. Secondly, the population, again, because we're such a small population, we could have one family go out of town, you know, get infected, come back quarantined. It doesn't really, you know, reflect that there's an outbreak in White Pine County, but because the family was of a certain size, it hits our, whatever our percentage number is. And are we going to go off of percentage, testing percentage? Because as vaccines roll out, presumably testing's going to go down, and the people who are testing have symptoms. So the testing positive percentage can go up, but not really reflect a huge outbreak. So it's hard to, so we want to, yeah, so if we want to go with population, or we want to nail down a number that makes sense for our population that would reflect, just make sure that we're actually reflecting a real outbreak and not false.
Right, yeah, I respectfully disagree with you on that one, Scott. Since this started some 400 days ago, or 14 days of flat, the benchmark of all restrictions has been to stem the overwhelming of the healthcare capacity.
Right, not to stop the outbreak, but to...
Yeah, not stop the outbreak, but to stem overwhelming the healthcare. And so I think that benchmark needs to stay in place, and it has to be based on what our hospital capacity is.
Here's the flat reality, and I'm only speaking for myself. The mask is off, so to speak, at this point. We've seen three, actually probably more than that, other states who are completely open and living life as normal. We've now figured out that this is not anywhere near what everybody made it out to be. If a real pandemic doesn't require a propaganda campaign to remind us that it's real. So I have no intention, unless it really becomes a problem, of ever going back to the garbage that we put up with. Shouldn't ever happen.
Yeah, this plan does not commit us to that. It's just that we'll have a second meeting to talk about.
I think what we're looking at to try to get away from the state and all that thing is what is in the interest of White Pine County? Because on May 1st, it's going to be White Pine County. So like in Las Vegas with 3 million people, or Reno with a million, whatever, we're dealing with what's best for White Pine County, what this commission thinks is best. And looking at the numbers, and we have them right here, we have been outstanding, and we just continue to get better and better. So as we kind of narrow down all the discussion, we need to get back to what are we voting for? What is in the best interest of White Pine County? What does this county commission want to do for its citizens? So I think that that is our primary focus. We're dealing with White Pine County. We're sending off to the governor whatever he has to do. You know, we can't read minds, we can't say they're going to say this or that. We're doing what we say in this resolution. We're doing what we say is in the best interest of White Pine County and its citizens, and that is to open up completely. That's my opinion. So White Pine County is what we're dealing with.
I think we ought to put in here COVID bed capacity reaches or exceeds 75%.
Yeah, I'm ready to make the motion, Chairman. So I move that we adopt this plan with the following amendments. Strike 80%, make it 75%. Strike ICU, make that COVID. And then Commissioner Carson add the resource needs grants that Desi's working on. And otherwise, adoption presented.
First by Commissioner Gudon, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Bolus on paper?
Aye.
Any opposed, if any? Seeing none, we'll let you vote on them again. I think it'd be official right there, District Attorney.
Yeah, we have one more vote with the county commission. And Desi, can you give me the language for the grant that you're talking about?
I will.
And I will add that in there.
Great, great discussion. Thank you all, because you're all here. Lastly... I'll just pass it out.
This is just nothing where you're at in the county. There's a graphic on the back. So total from your, from the start of COVID-19 till now, we've got a total of 566 cases.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt?
Go ahead.
I apologize. That was just informed of some information. I'd like to reopen item one, if we could, and ask for an amended motion to allow the addition of any grants which may be affected by this plan, just add those into the resource needs.
Good idea.
I was informed that there may be other grants that we're asking for that wasn't specifically identified by Desi. That, I just want that leeway to put those grants in there.
So amended.
Do we need a vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that's great.
Thank you, pardon interruption.
No, that's good. We wanted, we want to be on the up and up. So total for, I just wanted to give you a COVID overview, because I knew you were going to vote pretty much to open up May 1st. So your total cases during this pandemic have been 566 cases. Currently in the county, there's eight active under quarantine. They will fall off in two days. Okay, that means they've met the requirements of being quarantined and be done. So unless anything happens, knocking on wood, we will go down to zero active cases. We've had six total deaths in our county that attributed to COVID. These are actually COVID deaths. I investigated each of these cases, and they were from complications. Two being the Ely State Prison. Seems like that's always a question, how many of these are prisoners? How many of these are prisoners? Well, there's two.
And thank you for making that statement there.
Right. We did have the vaccinations. We, my hat's off to everyone that's tried to get this done. White Pine County, or 29.3% of our population has either, has started with the vaccination process. Doesn't mean we have 29% that have finished, but at least started. So then the state, of course, we're ahead of the state, 27.6%. To have what they call herd immunity, you need 80 to 95% of people either having a virus or having been vaccinated and then protected. On the back of this piece of paper, you can see a graphic, just essentially, this is just showing you graphical representation where the cases came. Essentially, you can see we had a very large spike after Halloween, due to all the Halloween parties, which we discussed in previous meetings. And then since that time, we've kind of seen our biggest peak, you know, the cold winter months. And now we're starting to taper off to heartbeating. That is to be expected. That's the trend we're seeing throughout the state. That's the trend we're seeing nationwide. We probably will see outbreaks here and there, but hopefully not to anything that the commission needs to move on or to work through. I just would like to publicly thank all of the healthcare heroes in our county. Our county hospital has done excellent work. I'm a little biased, I realize. However, I think they've done a great, great job there. I think the other county, or other county health leaders in this county have done wonderful. It should be publicly noted that our county health nurse, Shannon Pierce, and Bernadette Senna have done a wonderful job keeping up and vaccinating and helping and organizing and doing great work there. Economy Drug has stepped in and have done a wonderful job there to be commended. The Ridley's Grocery Store recently started doing vaccines and doing testing. Great, great, great job there. And again, the hospital's really taken on a lot and started doing more vaccines, and I applaud them for that. So I feel as a community, we have done a wonderful job. And I don't know, if we had a key to the county, I guess we could give everybody a key to the county or something fun. But we've had some real great people in this county that really stepped forward. I've been blessed as I sit here and think that Brett North's efforts to sit and make sure that our county gets vaccines. He's been instrumental, him and Matthew Walker, to get vaccines secured for this county. As a, and I'm certainly not on the agenda, do you have any questions on me? Do you have any concerns as a commission?
Well, on behalf of the commission, your efforts need to be applauded as well. Because you've gone way above and beyond what we could have even expected. So as you reward or recognize other people, I think this commission needs to recognize you as well, for we really appreciate all the efforts you've done, your coming to the meetings. Thank you very much.
That's true, Dr. Coons, especially where people have called you, whether it's the library, the school district, in regards to the horse races, and you being there and walking out and assessing and helping them through difficult times. Appreciate that a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And those in the community are still welcome to reach out, even though we're opening May 1st, it sounds like. I'm here, I'm here to answer questions, I'm here to offer advice. It's now, I think I applaud this commission. I think it is time to let the people govern themselves to some degree, as much as we can get the state to allow us, and that's wonderful. So I appreciate your time. I don't have it on the agenda to ratify quarantine orders. Should that be on the agenda?
If you want them to do that, it shouldn't be on the agenda.
Okay, so maybe next time, just for your information, since December 9th, I think that was our last meeting, we've had 257 cases of that. 566 have come since our last meeting, December 9th, and have been put in quarantine. I'm not asking about this informational. Our citizens are respectful. Out of the 566, I've talked to each of these 566 families individually and have gotten nothing but courtesy, respect, and community care. People really wanted to try to be good. And that's just that we're White Pine County, and we're White, we're White Pine County strong, and I'm grateful for that. So with that, I would entertain a motion to dismiss this part of the help meeting. Oh, minutes, oh, thank you.
December 9th.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to vote on the minutes from December 9th.
Motion, motion to approve the once minor typhoid, which I already just told you. So, motion to approve the correction.
Do I have a second? Second, so motion by Commissioner Carson, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I just said my name. I forgot about the Commissioner Carson.
Commissioner Carson, second by Commissioner Biden to approve the minutes from December 9th. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes, seeing none, motion carries. Entertain a motion to conclude this portion of the meeting.
You actually have another public comment?
I have another, oh, another public comment. I apologize. I'm doomed to this field. You can ask her in 10 months.
And I just want to repeat that, Dr. Coons, just so the board is aware that I'd like to publicly also acknowledge Bernadette Senna and Shannon Pierce for their efforts. This has been going on for months, and those two ladies worked tirelessly. I don't know if you've been in the building, but there's a, it looks like a mad rush on Black Friday, except for at Burger King. The cars are circling constantly, and they're out there in the cold weather. They've had three layers of clothing on during the heart of the winter. No complaints, just had a smile. But they've also not dropped any of the customer service or taking care of the patients in their office, as well as all the individuals that have come up with all the questions and getting the organizations and whatnot. And I just publicly want to recognize those two ladies, because, you know, we recognize people for their efforts in different entities and what they're doing, but they're the unsung heroes that help the county.
Thanks, Derek.
Other public comment on the phone or in person? Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two corrections on the minutes, and I'll give those to Nicole. The other thing I want to know is, the governor's directive has been muted, been away with? Last item is, I couldn't hear the death count and how the breakdown looks. I'd like a repetition of that. I couldn't hear you because of the...
Six, six and two.
Six and two, and where are they all from?
Here.
All in White Pine County?
Yes, sir.
Nothing with the prison?
Two in the prison, but they're still concerned with us, because they live here.
I want a clarification.
Yes, sir.
So I have to do something, thank you.
Any further comment? Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
Second, first by Commissioner Gudon, second by Commissioner Howell, favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll recess, we'll close the public help meeting and reopen the county commission meeting on page two. We don't have public comment yet right here, do we?
Oh, yeah, no, you haven't do it.
Yeah, we're going to open the special joint county commission and fire commission meeting, and the first thing on that item is public comment. Is there any public comment on the fire commission meeting? Anyone on the phone?
No.
Anyone in the audience?
George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I've not seen any resolution on the Avenue D access to Highway 93. That road is way too narrow. There's a meat code, needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment inside the building? Any on the phone? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. And on page two, we'll open the special joint county commission and fire commission meeting. We've already had a public comment, but item one is discussion for possible action. The direction or approval of way to revenues and department expenses in FY '22 budget, including as presented, commissioned, et cetera. Is that fine, James?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to turn this over to Elizabeth at this time, and we can go through the budget process for the fire and county commission.
Okay, so I provided you documentation that showed various things that were requested, one of them being the changes in increases and decreases by account number in each fund that were non-payroll related. And then I gave you a list of the cost of payroll changes by fund. And then I gave you another outline on chain increases only and whether they're recurring or non-recurring. I also provided you with some information that it's important that we review and make sure that we understand. One of them is the central services allocation. This is how we allocate human resources, information technology, and finance expenses to our special revenue funds. It's based on the number of FTEs, and I have provided that documentation to you so that you could review that, as well as how we allocate the property and liability insurance to the various special revenue funds. That is a combination of what is your total budget, what are your net fixed assets for your department or special revenue fund, and what is your total payroll? All of these things add in either to property insurance or projected liability insurance. So we come up with a formula for that. All of those numbers have been updated into the budget that I'm proposing for tentative. I do not have final numbers on the master insurance policy for next year. It is looking like it is a very hard market this year, and those will go up. So I just had a meeting. The major portion that is still being reviewed by pool and pact is our Lloyd's of London policy, and that is the probably 75% of what we pay for, and that's still ongoing. So final numbers are not available, but it does look like our insurance will be going up, and I have provided for an increase. Another thing that I want to point out to you that came up that I have not changed in the budget for tentative, that I was asked to do an analysis of, has to do with calculations for base wage increases for a justice of the peace. He has not had, other than his longevity increasing, a base pay increase, similar to what we've seen for our other elected officials over the past multiple years. And so I did provide you an analysis of what it would look like if there were a 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5% increase. Because remember, when we go ahead and we increase base pay, that increases longevity, as well as retirement and Medicare for that position. So that's what those increases are.
Elizabeth, real quick, what is the raises that we've given to other departments over the last five years in a percent? You're saying 1, 2, 3, 4. Do you have a number that tells us what the increases were to all the other departments?
No, I can come back with that for you. Each, each, you have multiple different departments. I don't remember the last time we've increased the pay for our exempt employees. That schedule's been in place for a while. I know that the elected officials pursuant to NRS got increases. I don't remember what they were from year to year, and I believe that was for a three or four-year period, that it went up every year. And then for your OE3 and your Sheriff's Association, it's pursuant to collective bargaining. So I can go back and get those numbers for you.
I just want to be fair, whether you look at what the percentage increase would be.
Okay.
If we have that, we'd be fair.
How long has the justice of the peace, five years?
You said five years, I think since he's been on.
Yeah, I will go ahead and get that information for you. I remind you that we need to get to a tentative by April 15th, but I certainly can come back with those numbers. And you know that the increase from 1 to 5% is going to be between $1,007 and $5,035, and we can make that decision at the April 14th meeting, and I can incorporate that into the tentative budget, if that is the preference. And then you'll have the data to work with. Okay, and then I did the analysis also of the White Pine County general fund balance in comparison to Resolution 2016-02. So at this point, I want to disclose to you that I have some concerns about the projections for our revenues. They're set to go up substantially. Now, I knew CTX would, because the pandemic's ever, and sales tax is going to go back up. But what has concerned me is when I reviewed the data for the revenues from the Department of Taxation for our ad warm taxes, our lead renewable energy abatement went up five times what it used to be. And that should be going down consistently over a period of time. So I discussed this with the assessor, and evidently, there is something that happened within DevNet that has caused that. And he is having DevNet look at this, and they are expediting that process. But the question that came back to me from the assessor was, is this the only thing where we have an issue? Or did something else happen within DevNet that we are seeing these very large increases? I did reach out to the Department of Taxation, and I have not heard back from them. And Burton is working with DevNet on this. And so we're looking at an increase in our revenues, but I'm not convinced that they're maybe as set as they should be. So I apologize for coming to you with confusion, and we do have until the final budget adoption to go ahead and amend those and figure things out. We are working on it, but it doesn't make it easy for you to make decisions.
So Travis and I were working on this yesterday, and we discussed this with Elizabeth. And so what we did is we assumed revenues from 2019, 2020, pre-pandemic, and just operated off of that assumption, which was less than this crazy thing, just in case.
About any and a half less of what the state has downloaded.
So, yeah, and that is the nice colorful sheet that we, I handed out to you. Because what I show is that, based on revenues and expenditures, you were, you were above the 25% any fund balance being projected under Resolution 2016-02, without making any further amendments. But I had the concern. So then I will let in Travis talk about their work in what they did based on the 2020 revenues.
So clarify what, what she's saying is, if we gave everybody every request for increases or additional funding and all that stuff, under the numbers we don't trust for revenue, we're still okay. But that's not a smart way to do it, so we're assuming, we're assuming that we, our revenue numbers are probably closer to what we're used to, and we just made a couple adjustments. There were a couple of requests for vehicles, and let me just go in order. So we felt like county manager, if you had to choose between an IT manager and county manager, it feels like that is a more beneficial position. And so probably reduced the proposed pay scale on that, with room to increase it if they do well. So then, so that, we dropped that by 77,000. We decided not to go with an IT manager, so that knocked off 111,300. The vehicle requests seem like we could save quite a bit of money if we went with a used vehicle versus a new one. You know, and a couple of years old, sometimes you can get it, knock 15 grand off of the price. So those are just assumptions that we put on there, which has broken down what we wanted to make that. The 28,000.
I know the juvenile, we made it 30,000 instead of 45,000, and the utility one, we made it 30 as well instead of 43.
My question on the vehicles is, the used ones are so high in price. I was in the business, so they're going way up. But when you compare warranties for five years to savings of used compared to new, and the repairs and stuff like that that could come down the road, we just got done paying, I think it was $5900 for the assessor's truck. But just, just food for thought, that are you better off buying a new one at this day? Because I know that in the auctions down in Vegas, used cars, used trucks are out of sight. They're almost as much as new. But with the warranty, here's the, with the warranty, I think it's a better fit.
Okay, well, so whoever's shopping can probably figure this out, but if you buy, we'll just say they buy, I can only speak for Toyota. I used to sell play the music, I don't tell anybody else guitar sales. I, they have a Toyota certified used thing, right? So it had a warranty that was almost as good as buying a brand-new car, because they had gone through it and said, well, this is a 2019 car, not a 2021. It's basically brand-new, you know, somebody used it as a lease or something, and so we're putting 100,000 mile warranty. They usually have some pretty great warranties on a certified used vehicle that's one or two years old. So that probably could be mitigated, but what was the other thing? And then we just looked at, and across the board, everything but payroll, fire district, or any other contractual obligations, anything we're not able to reduce, just an across-the-board reduction by 5% saves us around 300 grand. And all of that put together puts us on target.
And we just came up with this as just a first look, you know? We're not like, pie's any one, bro, through nothing. We just brought this forward for hopefully expedite some of the discussion.
Appreciate what both of you did. And what I really liked about it is you used the fact, and you kept us at 25%. That, to me, is a resolution we should always try to, whatever we do, try to do it. You did a good job, and you still kept us at the 25%, so thank you very much.
I personally, absolutely, I agree 100% with what Chairman House said. But I personally think that it would, I like having the IT person rather than the general manager, because Elizabeth can go back to being just the finance director with the big changes that are going to be going, moving forward with the Justice Center and redoing the courthouse. I also think that we will be less dependent and can reduce our spending on contract services with IT, with the BCT. That also can go down. So that, personally, that's, you know, and I think I said that in previous commission meetings. Second thing that I quite... Second thing that I question, I didn't fully understand, there was numerous departments that wanted to go back to their 14%. So where does this 5%, are you cutting?
5%, 5% is off the full board number.
Okay.